Good afternoon. Welcome to our call board meeting for June 13th. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct our second public hearing on the FY23 general fund budget and the second public hearing to set the mill levy for calendar year 2022 property tax digest and to adopt a tentative 2023 general fund budget and millage rate. And with that, I will turn the call board meeting over to our finance chair, Ms. Kathy Williams, to conduct the second of three hearings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I did at 11 o'clock this morning, I will be reading the statutory language as well as some background information. This can be a very, very confusing times, not can be, it is. It is every single year. We read the same thing every single year, and every single year we have people going, "What?" So we're going to try to give some clarification. All right. Senate Bill 177 Act 431, which was passed during the 1999 legislative session effective January 1st, 2000, established the taxpayer bill of rights. The bill was to prevent any indirect tax increases that resulted from increases to existing property values in a county due to inflation. Increases to taxable property values are attributed to either, one, increases due to inflation, or, two, increases due to new or improved properties, what we call market forces. In accordance with the taxpayer bill of rights, county governments are then required to provide additional reporting to taxpayers. If the mill levy is rolled back to offset any inflationary increases in the tax digest, there is no additional requirements and/or reporting imposed. However, if the mill levy is not rolled back and the levying or recommending authority elects to set a millage rate higher than the rollback rate, then the following is required. First, a press release explaining intent to increase taxes. Two, notification of tax increase with three public hearings. And three, publish notice in local newspaper and on official website, minimum one week in advance of each of the three public hearings. The publications made by the Muskogee County School Board of Education regarding the proposed mill levy for fiscal year 2023, calendar year 2022, are all due in compliance to Senate Bill 177 Act 431. Pursuant to these requirements, we will hold three, as chairperson already established, we will hold three public hearings as part of the process. All concerned citizens are invited to the public hearings on setting the millage rate to be held through Zoom and live stream on the district YouTube channel or in person at here, the Public Education Center. The dates and times will be this morning at June 13th at 11:00, right now, June 13th at 5:00, and the last and third will be June 27th at 6:00 p.m. in two weeks. The millage rate for 2022 will be set at the meeting in the boardroom on the first floor of the Board of Education on the 27th at 6:00. By state law, local taxing authorities such as MCSD must either keep their tax collections revenue neutral by decreasing the millage rate to offset the gain taxes from property value updates, or announce a tax increase, even though the actual millage rate is not increasing. The board is considering adopting a millage rate of 23.321, a rate unchanged from last year, but 1.652 mills higher than the rollback rate of 21.669. At the tentative rate, 7.62% more revenue will be generated for FY2023, requiring the announcement of a proposed property tax increase. However, taxpayers whose property values have not increased will see no increase in their school tax bill. The board has determined that this proposed mill levy is necessary to provide the resources needed for all students to achieve as we continue in our efforts to be a premier school district. Highlights of the budgeted expenditures include a $2,000 raise to teacher salaries and related scales, additional full-time staff for the police department increases due to inflation, and utilities, fuel, and supplies. There is a copy of the budget along with a five-year tax digest and tax levy history available on the district website or through our financial services. So that is the statutorily required language that we read, and I'm going to try to put a frame around it to explain it. Our mill rate is 23.321. It has been that for last year. For a number of years, we have not raised the millage in Muskogee County for schools in at least 20 years. Actually, in that time, we decreased it. I don't remember how much, but a little bit, to give some relief in a year. We are maintaining the exact same millage rate, but because of inflation and market forces, the state legislature has said if we don't decrease taxes, then we have to say we're raising them. We're not raising them. There is changes in the digest due to market movement and inflation. Our students will benefit from that, as they should. We will be able to meet our utility bills that have skyrocketed through this time period because we can take advantage of that movement. But we're not raising anybody's taxes. The millage rate is 23.321. It has been 23.321. It has not changed. The only thing we've done in the last 20 years since I've been involved in public education is decrease taxes once. Madam Chair, that is the statutory language. I will finish the public hearing by calling for any public comment or discussion questions to please come forward at this time. And I will call again for any questions, discussion, public comment, anybody wanting to be heard, to please come forward at this time. I will ask if there's anybody on Zoom with their hand raised that would like to come before this body for questions, discussion at this time. The call has occurred for three different times, and that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Bloodworth will do a presentation on the tentative FY23 budget.
Good evening. I'm Janice Bloodworth, the Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here tonight to present the FY23 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. We practiced this earlier, and it still doesn't work. I don't know if he moved it or I did. We'll move forward. This right here, I know, is very small, and you won't really be able to read it, but I did want to just show you this document here. This is attached to the board agenda for you to look at. It is the FY23 budget for all funds. And tonight, you'll be voting on the tentative budget for these funds. Two weeks. Two weeks. Well, tonight, you'll be voting on the tentative budget. You'll be voting on the final budget in two weeks. And the first, the second column of this, the first column is the total funds, but the second column is the general fund, where the regular operations of the school district are reported. There's another column for other state grants, which are also included in the general fund, but we kind of show them differently for, because they are given to us for a specific purpose. Then there's the capital projects, which is where the East Bloss revenue and expenditures are tracked. The debt service, where the bond payments that we issued in July of this past year are being tracked. And then there's the federal, state, and other programs that include the revenue and expenditures of the various grants that we receive throughout the district. And one of the programs that are included in this column that is of most interest is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or otherwise known as ESER, which are the dollars that we got in response to COVID-19. Those are tracked in that federal and state column. And also in there, other, one of the other largest grants that we received that are part of that is the Title I grant, but also our after-school programs are also recorded into, in that column. The other columns are the activity funds, which are the expenditures at the school-based accounts for like athletics and clubs. Most of the donations that we receive through the district are recorded in this fund. And then there's also the school nutrition and the Chattahoochee Valley Library. All of these make up the entire funding of the district. The total anticipated revenue of all funds is $463 million. On the next couple of slides, I will go into detail on the general fund, but I did want to point out a couple of things on the other, a couple of other funds here. One is, if you look at the capital projects fund, you'll see that we are spending down fund balance. That's as expected as we began our, several of the projects that we have, the biggest one being the elementary school, that those will be using the dollars that we have set aside for that. And also, the other one, once again, is the ESER funding that is included in the federal and state grants. There's about $47 million included in that column related to that grant. Looking at the budgeted revenue for the school district, the largest component that we have is from the state revenue, and it makes up about 57% of our total revenue. The local property tax is the next section that we get the funding from, and we get about 40% of our funding through those local property taxes. The other 3% is made up of local dollars and some federal dollars. Looking at local property taxes year over year, you will see that, as we discussed in the public hearing, that we will be seeing an increase in our property tax revenue for a total of about $8 million. This is related, once again, to the growth in the digest, as well as increases in the budgeted amount for the title ad valorem tax. The state funding, which comes from the Quality Basic Education Formula earnings, we will be getting about $170 million of funding from this source, which is about a 6.6% million-dollar increase over last year. This increase comes from the elimination of the austerity reduction that was in place last year. They have eliminated that for this year. It also includes an increase for the $2,000 increase to the teacher salary scale. However, both of those increases were offset by a change in our funding due to the reduction of our student count. We had about 750 less students counted for our formula this year. There was also a small reduction to the equalization funding. Looking at federal and other local revenue, federal revenue is staying pretty much the same as what it was last year. The other local revenue is increasing slightly. That increase is coming from the indirect cost revenue that we are able to charge grants, the federal grants that we have, and with the additional dollars that we are receiving from the federal funding and from ESER, that we are seeing an increase in this revenue.
I'm not, I'm not real clear on what you just said, because you said that the 286% increase from other local revenues is due to federal.
Yes. And also, the other one, once again, is the ESER funding that is included in the federal and state grants. There's about $47 million included in that column related to that grant. Looking at the budgeted revenue for the school district, the largest component that we have is from the state revenue, and it makes up about 57% of our total revenue. The local property tax is the next section that we get the funding from, and we get about 40% of our funding through those local property taxes. The other 3% is made up of local dollars and some federal dollars. Looking at local property taxes year over year, you will see that, as we discussed in the public hearing, that we will be seeing an increase in our property tax revenue for a total of about $8 million. This is related, once again, to the growth in the digest, as well as increases in the budgeted amount for the title ad valorem tax. The state funding, which comes from the Quality Basic Education Formula earnings, we will be getting about $170 million of funding from this source, which is about a 6.6% million-dollar increase over last year. This increase comes from the elimination of the austerity reduction that was in place last year. They have eliminated that for this year. It also includes an increase for the $2,000 increase to the teacher salary scale. However, both of those increases were offset by a change in our funding due to the reduction of our student count. We had about 750 less students counted for our formula this year. There was also a small reduction to the equalization funding. Looking at federal and other local revenue, federal revenue is staying pretty much the same as what it was last year. The other local revenue is increasing slightly. That increase is coming from the indirect cost revenue that we are able to charge grants, the federal grants that we have, and with the additional dollars that we are receiving from the federal funding and from ESER, that we are seeing an increase in this revenue.
I'm not, I'm not real clear on what you just said, because you said that the 286% increase from other local revenues is due to federal.
Yes. The, the federal grants that we receive from, that are listed in that federal and state column, that we are able to charge those grants an indirect cost.
And that comes in as local?
It, it comes in as local revenue to the general fund.
Thank you.
That we are able to then spend on those indirect costs. Here is a breakdown of the budgeted expenditures by function. Obviously, the biggest function that we have is the instruction function, which makes up about 66% of all of our expenditures. The next area that we have is about 10% in facilities and maintenance, with the next largest area being school admin at 6%, or almost 7% of our expenditures. In looking at expenditures year over year, you will see that there has been an increase in these expenditures. Salaries are up $19 million, and operation expenses are up $8 million, for a total of $27 million increase in expenditures. And looking at those salaries and benefits, those increases are coming, once again, from the $2,000 increase to the teacher salary scale and related scales. Also, last year, in order to maintain our fund balance, we moved the budget, some salaries, budgeted salaries to the ESER funding. This year, we are moving those positions, budgeted expenditures, back into the general fund, which is, it's approximately a $10 million increase in salaries related to that. It's not additional positions. It is just the moving of the expenditures from the federal and state back over into the general fund. We did, however, add a couple of positions. These were needed positions for the different areas in the, the school district. We added a, some positions in the Division of Information Services, the Division of Human Resources, Division of Teaching and Learning, and the Police Force. In Information Services, we added a cybersecurity position, which, as we all know, is becoming an utmost priority for school districts. In Human Resources, we are looking to add someone for recruitment and retention. Once again, a very high need for the district. In Teaching and Learning, we are adding back a position for youth apprenticeship that we had several years ago, but through the COVID years, we had not been able to fill that position, so we're bringing that position back.
Question, I want to reiterate sort of your second bullet here on the positions that we had moved. They weren't new positions. We moved them into the federal funds, which gave us some relief in a year we desperately needed it due to the COVID crisis. It allowed us to get some relief in those funds, and now we're moving them back. So it was not new positions. It was simply getting relief in our regular budget and our regular expenditures when we had those new funds coming in, and now we're putting them back.
That is correct.
Just want to reiterate that. I think that's important.
One other point that I want to make, or a couple of other points about the salaries, is we did include the step increases again, so that any scale that had steps, they will receive those step increases. For a teacher, for example, they will get their $2,000 increase along with a step if they are in the position in order to get a step. We also, back in January, we gave the 3.5% increase to the majority of the positions that were not on the teacher salary scale or related to that teacher salary scale. That has carried over into our budget again this year. They're not seeing an additional increase. It's just in the budget, we're maintaining that increase. And there, the other individuals that did not receive an increase in January are receiving that increase now. So as we start this budget, every employee should have seen some sort of increase to their salary, whether it was in January or starting in July.
Yes. I just want some clarity on what the youth apprentice job is, the new one, or the one that's being redone? What is that, what does that job involve?
It works with the different organizations or companies in, in the district, or in the county that, that works in, in working with them to get our students and apprenticeships. Yes.
Very good.
We had that before?
Yes, we did. And it is partially grant-funded position.
We receive about $30,000, $30,000 toward that position from the state.
About half the salary.
About half the salary. Also, an additional position, you may recall that you all approved as part of the budget parameters, the, the virtual school, and that's part included in this as well, so they're teaching and learning as well.
And moving on to the increase in operations, as Dr. Lewis was, just mentioned, the Lighthouse Virtual Academy. That is, we have additional positions with that, as well as the increase in operation expenses for that. The teachers this first year with this program are going to be, are going to be provided through Proximity, a company that provides us contract teachers. And we have had the additional staff to run that program. And once again, with the utilities, just like the salaries that we moved out, we moved out utilities last year as well in order to help us balance last year's budget. We are now moving those utilities back into this year's budget. But in, in addition to that, that not only are we moving that back, but utilities, we're also seeing an increase in the cost of the utilities themselves, along with an increase in the cost of fuel. I mean, everybody knows that. And maintenance supplies and our waste disposal, we're also areas that we are seeing a significant impact of inflation on those.
Did you hear of that last one?
The 1.5 mils? Not yet. And then the last point here I want to make is that we are transferring 1.5 mils to the library, which is an increase over last year. It is still just the 1.5 mils, but since we are seeing an increase in the mill, the digest, they are able to have an increase as well.
And that's kind of what I wanted to stress also, since we'll be seeing that budget later in my committee. It's the same 1.5 mils it was last year, and the year before, and the year before, and for as long as I've known, because that's what we're required statutorily by the state of Georgia to fund. And it's something that we do gladly, because we have an outstanding library system, but because the digest changes, the dollar amount, the bottom dollar amount changes. You could just as easily bet a negative if we had had a lot of people moving out of Columbus. So it's not a mill rate increase. It's nothing different than last year. It's just the same as the millage for, for, for operations. It is simply because of changes in the market.
That was a great example to reiterate that, that point on Ms. McCray.
My question actually is the previous slide. I was thinking there was going to be a second one still, just, I mean, addressing salaries and benefits. I know that there's another group that's getting a 3.5 increase this budget cycle. Can we clearly state that so that it's out there?
Okay. That the individuals on the management scale, as I mentioned, not everybody got an increase in, in January, that the management scale, those that are on the management scales, which are our directors and our chiefs, they did not get a raise in January. We are now incorporating that raise in the FY23 budget.
And I do want to clarify that, too, that if they don't get, if they're certified, they don't get both. They get either the 3.5, or they get the increase based on their teacher retirement. They don't get both.
Right.
That was my next question. So, okay, got it.
So the 3.5 was legislated, right? It was, that was?
That was our, yes, our decision.
So I'm just curious, and I know I probably should know this because I was involved in the conversations, but I don't recall off the top of my head, was the 3.5% number, because that's kind of what we felt our budget would allow, because it's certainly lower than what the inflationary rate is.
Right.
It's lower than the social security cost of living increases. It's lower than just about any percentage of increase we've seen to accommodate our new economy in these last two years. So, you know, the, the, I guess the reasoning around it, was it a budgetary impact that we could absorb?
Yes.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, that we, we gave what we could to everybody in our system, basically. Some of it was required by state, but some of it, we said, let's try and make sure that our people are, we can alleviate some of the pressures of the economy, because it's well worth, you know, it's, it's money well spent, but it doesn't, it's still not quite what inflation is.
Right.
Well, and I just want to point out, too, that we, again, the inflation really started back after we'd already talked about the 3.5, so we're trying to adjust, but we don't know what the, my crystal ball has been real fuzzy as of late. So, so we're trying to be very conservative, but also prudent and judicious in these salaries, hoping that we can continue to increase them, because again, one of the things we all recognize is once you give a raise, it's forever. So it's one of those things that you've got to always maintain and plan for. And then we also know that things like, come up that we can't predict, like, for example, some of the security measures we're having to take in light of some of the recent events. So all these things go into, and also as charged by you all in terms of the budget parameters we had, and then also looking at the charge to build our fund balance back to where we want it and need it to be.
But we just need to keep our people.
Absolutely, and we are, and that's why we've done so many different things, trying to look at how we can incentivize them in terms of referral bonuses for recruitment purposes, the bonuses that were given previously, both from the state but also locally. So lots of things we try to do as one time till we can make sure we can adjust accordingly to the new environment.
I just want to point of clarity, if this is correct. Now, that 3.5 raise goes to the people who are not on the teacher salary, right, which includes bus drivers, sec, you know?
Yeah, the bus drivers got theirs in January.
But we still are talking about the 3.5.
It's the management level people, the directors. Give the classes again, Ms. Bloodworth.
Yeah, I heard that, but I'm just saying, because, I'm saying because, okay, let's say they're starting to get theirs in 3.5, I mean, in, for 23. But what I'm saying, oh, what I'm saying is that we were talking about the raise for this group of people when the teacher's raise was 2.5, right?
It was 2,000.
2,000, okay, so 2,000, if you do that now, having the math. But now I thought they got a raise, too. They got the 2,000 from the 5,000.
No.
And they got the 2,000.
Let me, let me try and clarify, so if you recall, back when Governor Kemp first took office, four years ago, approximately, he promised in his campaign at that time to give a $5,000 increase to teachers. His first year, I believe it was, he gave 3,000, which we passed on to all of our employees as well, even though we don't, we didn't receive as much from the state to cover that, which is typical. We always have more teachers and that kind of thing, and it's covered by the state allocations. So he gave the $3,000 then. Governor Kemp gave teachers a $2,000, $2,000 one-time bonus during the adjusted budget back in January that we passed on, and then included that $2,000 going forward in this year's budget. Which is, okay, for a total of five.
Well, I knew that, I, well, I knew he gave.
But I want to make sure that's out there, because I want to make sure the full $5,000 was allocated and awarded.
Five, yeah, and then he came back this time and redid that. Now, I don't, I'm not doing, I'm not doing math or anything. And that, of course, was the state who did that, and our 3.5 is what we are doing. So, and I'm glad we're, we're making adjustments for, you know, this other class of people. But my point is, is that you did that according to the budget, right? And it's not like our district did what it could. Our district did in terms of one, the 3.5 that was decided. I go, oh, you did say that the 3.5, 3.5 versus 4.0 versus 2.0 versus, so you looked at the budget, the overall budget, and the only, and the only thing that we could do was 3.5. Was that 3.5 based on what we could do, or was it based on we had already given that other class of people, the non, people who are not on, on the teacher, on the teacher salary scale? Because I, I thought when presented, it was presented that since we have already given those people 3.5, then now we will give the management 3.5.
Yes, that is, that is correct. That we, the 3.5% that we're passing to the, the individuals on the management scale, it is 3.5% because we gave the others 3.5%.
And that's what the budget, we felt like in looking into the budget and the unknowns going forward, we felt like that was a reasonable amount to give to those people who are not on the state salary schedule.
Okay, when we started the first time, why didn't we give the management the 3.5 first? We didn't, we, we felt like we didn't have money or something?
No, the board, it was a board decision that...
We, we, my recommendation was to give it to the lowest-paid employees back in January, and then assess where we were, and then give that for, going forward, knowing that we were going to be getting the governor's promise at that time, but he had not been able to pass the budget at that time. So I, we talked about the 3.5% for the management class after we saw the budget was actually finalized by the governor.
And the impact of this raise, it puts our people, how does it impact with people with these positions in other parts of the state?
Well, some are higher, some are lower. That, I mean, it just depends on what the, the class of job, but generally speaking, it's comparable to anybody in our...
Comparable?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I can't say that every position is exactly above, or, but it is comparable.
Because I know when people do, there's some kind of study usually.
Compensation study.
When people make raises and stuff, they kind of look around and see what everybody's doing. You know, based, we're basing on our budget, but we also should base it on what everybody else is doing.
Well, we do, but keep in mind that usually that data is a year behind, there's lagging data, so we're always comparing with somebody else's data that we hope is current, but it's whatever's posted, and we do call around and find out, and we go by what they tell us.
So we're comparable, basically.
But these are comparable based on, generally speaking, where we are with our, if anything, some of our management is a little low in some areas.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to the fund balance, what we are projecting for the end of FY23 is $55 million of fund balance, which is a strong fund balance that is, it's about where we want to keep that fund balance.
And that's equivalent to how many days?
I will have to get that information for you. Looking at, now, I'm pulling everything together into one slide, the...
One second, we have a question over here.
Going back to the fund balance, so we're projecting that it would decrease by $9 million this year, even with all the ESER funds that we're using expenses for?
Yes, because we are not, we are trying to become less dependent on those ESER funds, and so we have not you, put any of those, or we have less of those expenditures that we charged to ESER last year in that budget, and more of them in the general fund budget.
But I mean, we, we're doing what we can to spend our ESER funds, because we have to spend them to get reimbursed.
Right.
And we're still projected to eat into $9 million of our fund balance in a year.
Well, we're moving some positions back, positions.
We are, our, our ultimate goal is that we will not be dependent on those ESER funds, so once those dollars go away, we will not then have to come back and make huge cuts in the district.
I know, I'm all for that, and that's one of the things I've said for a couple of years, that I was concerned about, you know, the budget being dependent too much on the ESER funds. I just didn't know that by kind of moving back and still having some ESER funds, that we would still have our, our expenses and our revenue off by that. that we would still have our, our expenses and our revenue off by that much.
Right, and one thing to keep in mind with that is when salaries are budgeted, we budgeted for all the needs of the district, and they will not be, unfortunately, we will not fill all the positions that we need in the district this next year. So, there will be vacancies that, um, will reduce that number.
Now, I, I mean, and for quite a few years, I kind of got my head around that, okay, this projected use of fund balance would not be as bad as it was, but then right before COVID, we had a couple of years when I was like, oh, wait, stop. You know, it was as bad as it did, so that's the main reason, you know, I'm just asking that. Little sticker shock, I had not, I guess, I know y'all gave us information, but I had not quite registered on that previously.
I'd like, but, but I will say that the fifty-five million is still comparatively healthy.
Yes.
I mean, when you look at some of the fund balances, we've been holding our breath over, that's, that's a nice sigh.
I just am concerned that if we continue to eat at it at nine million a year, then it won't last very long.
We will have sixty million in fund balance in a couple of years.
We're gonna have to do a big swing. Okay.
And you're right, but, but that's, the, you know, the fund balance was, was a part of the, um, budget parameters, and so, they got to continue to work back to that, because the ESER funds are definitely going away.
Right.
Well, I just want to simply, I just want to point out that when we, in the budget parameters, when we add positions, that with, and our budget is anywhere from eighty-five to eighty-eight percent personnel-intensive. This is not a lot, there's not much in the operations side, that's, it, we have cut those back to where it's pretty, pretty, pretty lean, uh, and given the fact that we're trying to keep our class sizes low, keep our police department, and increase our police department, looking at adding a virtual program that was part of the budget parameters, all those things, they do add up, and it is personnel-intensive. Uh, but I feel comfortable with, at this point in time, assuming we don't keep, um, you know, experiencing the high inflationary rate for years to come, and some of the other issues that we're doing. We're, we're, right now, we're in a programming area that I feel very comfortable in, we're making sure our, our teachers have updated curriculum, which is critically important, obviously, when our students are trying to be caught up in some of the areas of the unfinished learning that occurred over the last, uh, during, as a result of the pandemic. All those things play into the need for us to make sure our teachers have what they need. Security, um, these badges right here, they're not cheap, but they are invaluable when there's a need. And this brings our, uh, resources to their point immediately, and I want to point that out. That's just something I think is important for people to realize. Security measures are that district is taking, uh, is really ensuring that our staff and our students, um, have got responsiveness at a very timely basis, ensuring that this, by deploying one of these badges, we can send, whether it's medical or, uh, law enforcement, right to the location. And, but they're not, it's not something that's cheap, but I'm not sure what price you put on that. So, those are all things we're doing that I think is progressive thinking, and putting us in a position to ensure the safety and welfare of our students, staff alike, as well as making sure, obviously, our mission is educating kids and making sure they have updated curriculum and resources to help them be successful, all of which, um, is critically important. We talked about one of the positions, recruitment. We all know recruitment is no longer an event, it's a year-long event, uh, uh, journey. And that's not just in teaching as it once was, it's in every field, whether it's culinary, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's plant services. We're, we're no different than any other sector, we're all looking for the same thing, and trying to keep up, uh, with, uh, rewarding people and recognizing them, and compensating them fairly, to your point, in a comparable fashion.
So, just looking at it in total, um, we are projecting revenues at three hundred and nine million, expenditures at three hundred and eleven, with a transfer out of seven point six million, um, which, like we were mentioning before, is going to end up with a projected ending fund balance of fifty-five million. Just as a snapshot of, um, all that we've talked about. Now, I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about the ESER funding, we've mentioned it several times here tonight. Um, I wanted to, um, bring back, is this is an ever-changing thing, so every opportunity that we have, we want to bring back and inform the board on where we're spending these dollars and what they're being used for. We had, um, we received three large, um, buckets of money from this. The first one, we have spent entirely, we are now working on the second one, and with that, you can see, this is the breakdown of where we've spent that money. Under the learning loss section was last year's summer learning experience. Under meeting students' academic, social, emotional, and other needs, there was homebound virtual learning that we did, um, some of our students were still not able to come back this year, so we provided some virtual learning to those, um, individuals. Also, some computers and maintenance of those computers, as well as the textbooks. Um, we have been buying, um, more of our textbooks have had a digital component to them, and also offering, offering differentiated instruction. The other piece to this is the mental health support, is our behavior support program that is being funded through the ESER dollars. And, uh, the next section is the operations piece, where we've been kind of using these dollars to help sustain, um, where we've had cuts. And you can see, um, most of these, a lot of these dollars have gone directly to the employees in the, um, in the form of additional pay, the stipend, the furlough restoration, the one-time supplement, the salary supplement that we just, um, paid out. So, these dollars are going, um, to our employees. And then, once again, that indirect cost that I spoke about earlier.
And I do want to point out one more thing that I think is important. I want to thank the board for approving my recommendation earlier to make sure we kept our employees, um, employed. During the, um, pandemic, there were situations where other employers could not or did not, and thanks to, um, your approval of that recommendation, we've been able to keep our employees employed. And I think that's something that I would hope to think that, uh, our employees certainly do appreciate. Also, I just want to remind also, these ESER funds are not to be expended all in one year. I've had people say, well, how come you're not spending those dollars? Well, we are spending them, but we got to make sure we prorate them over the course of two to three years, because we know that this, uh, unfinished learning, and like, for example, the summer learning experience that we're currently involved in now, that's something we plan to do and hope to do for a couple more summers ahead yet. So, all that is not something we're supposed to spend all in one year. It's supposed to be rationed out and utilized over the span of three years.
Yes, and as you can see, we, um, got roughly forty-two million dollars from that second round of ESER funding. And, um, we anticipate that the majority of this will be spent by September of this year, and, um, moving exclusively on to the ESER three funding. And looking at, um, the SR two funding, um, actually, there, uh, the first deadline for that is this year, um, for the SR two, but then we get a carryover year, um, to spend the rest of the funds over this next year. The SR three funding goes through September two thousand twenty-four. Um, so looking at the SR three, uh, right now, we have about thirty-four million dollars set aside for learning loss. Right now, we are spending those dollars on intervention teachers and the summer school program, um, maintaining safe in-person instructions. Those were the HVAC projects that we have mentioned in the last couple of months, that we were going to be using these dollars for, along with some other, um, areas that we are, uh, have been spending those dollars. Uh, meeting students' academic and social, emotional needs. Once again, we're continuing with the textbooks, um, fine arts integration in that area. Moving on to the mental health supports, once again, is the behavior support services. Um, we had a couple of, um, schools that, uh, did the Love Like Lexi program. We also have the This Works program, um, which is an intervention program that engages both students and parents. And, um, this is, has had some success, um, throughout the district, and so we are implementing this in more schools, uh, to, um, have that, that connection between both the parents and the students. And then also, we have the Communities and School Project that is going on, that is bringing wraparound services to our element, to one of our elementary schools. We also have the operation, uh, operational continuity is the recruitment and retention efforts. Those are all of those efforts that we've mentioned tonight, but we've talked in, um, in great detail on, like, the relocation bonus, the tuition assistance, um, all of those things are falling under that recruitment and retention. And then, once again, the indirect cost on that for, um, a total of ninety-five million. And any other questions?
I just have a couple of questions, Ms. Chambers. On this particular, um, budget, it says that the total funds that are available is six hundred and eighty-eight million, eight hundred and forty-one hundred thousand dollars plus. How does that compare to last year, twenty twenty-two?
I'm sorry, I don't have all of those numbers in front of me. Um, the biggest change that, um, would have occurred would have been with the, uh, capital projects, and then also the, the setting of the funds aside for the debt service. That, you know, we've been, um, accumulating those debt service dollar, or not debt service, but the capital projects dollars, and, um, over this past, this past year, and also with the, um, uh, bonds that we sold has increased that amount.
Okay, and, um, you mentioned behavior support program, is that the Chance Light program?
Yes, that's what it is.
It was seven million dollars on one slide, and then on the other slide, there was a, on the SR two funds, there was a fourteen million dollars that included the behavior support program, again, Lex, Lexi, and some other things. Can you, can you give me a breakdown of each one of those programs and how much they cost?
Um, I can, I will get that for you, but, um, just remember with that behavior support, that, um, in the SR two, that's one year, and, um, SR three, that's going to be two years' worth of that program, because this does extend over multiple years.
Okay, perfect, that sounds good. And, um, I tried to, and Ms. Jones, I know that we've asked for this a couple of times, and you've sent it to us at least two times, but I'm going to ask one more time. The strategic plan, I tried to look for the current strategic plan on the website. I did see the one from Dr. Phillips, and several others that have passed. I'm looking for the strategic plan for this year, and the reason why is because I want to make sure that while we're doing all this spending, that we're actually budgeting for the things that we put in our strategic plan, just to make sure that they line up. I don't need that in order to vote on this preliminary budget tonight, but I would like to have it before we vote in two weeks on the permanent budget, if that's okay.
Yes.
And then, the other thing that I would like to have that would help me understand the budget a little better is sort of a breakdown of the different categories. Like, um, for instruction, we're spending two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars on instruction. Okay, what does that include? And the same thing for each one of these business services, school administration, general administration. I do get the number, I do know in the back of the book, you have it in different categories, but it's grouped by the schools.
Right, what I can do for you is, I can give it to you, a breakdown in like salaries, benefits, supplies.
Perfect.
I, I will break, um, give you that breakdown.
Yes, ma'am.
For those, each of those different areas.
That would help me, I do understand that we sort of vote on, um, this high-level budget.
Yes, yeah.
But in order for me to feel comfortable voting yes on the high-level budget, I sort of need to already have in my mind how it breaks down and how we're actually spending the dollars in each category. And I know you can't put that on our agenda, but it would be nice to have, so I can sort of digest it and see exactly. We've gotten extra money through ESER funds and some other grant money, so really what I'm interested in is how are we changing our curriculum? How are we changing instruction? How are we changing the things that matter in the classroom? I get the salary increases, well-deserved and definitely needed, but I sort of just want to understand a little better on how we're moving forward, um, with other wraparound services, programs, and things of that nature, now that we have more money.
So, I want to be sure, to make sure I get your request. So, we're talking about the general fund, when you're talking about ESER, that's an addition, so I want to make sure we're getting you what you want.
Absolutely, so let me clarify. I'm not talking about just the general fund, I'm talking about the six hundred and eighty-eight million plus. So, on this particular agenda, if you look, um, at one point three, the attachments, we have a tentative budget for the general fund, but then we also have the, um, all funds, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So, I'm assuming if we're voting, we're going to vote on both of those, correct?
Well, the, it, you're gonna, you're voting on the, um, tentative of all funds for tonight.
Which one?
General fund, it's the general fund.
General fund or all funds, she says all funds, you said general funds, and they're both attached. So, I need to know sort of what we're voting on.
It's going to be the tentative of all funds.
T tentative of all funds.
Well, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to clarify, though, when you're, you're, I want to make sure, because we're mixing buckets. Okay, you got the general fund, then you got the ESER and other federal dollars.
I totally understand.
So, you want all funds, right?
Yes, because that's what we're voting on, so it would help me just to understand.
Okay.
And then that will keep me from lying, getting up here next two weeks saying, oh, lying such and such, you know.
Gotcha.
So, if you would just get it to me ahead of time, I'll study on my own, and then if I have questions, I can email you and you, and get my questions answered before, you know, the two-week period to vote on the final budget. I don't have a problem with this tentative budget, I just need to understand and dig a little deeper on the specifics.
Okay, I, and I, like Dr. Lewis, want to make sure that I'm clear, that if I give it to you just in salaries, benefits, no further breakdown than that, do you want further breakdown than that? Or are you just looking for those big categories?
So, I'm looking for the big categories, and so, for example, um, school administration should have a budget. Correct?
Right.
So, you gave us the big number for school administration, can I see the school administration budget?
So, can I show, uh, that you would want to see it? I'll, uh, I will produce something and.
You can call me, because I, I do have a copy of an old one where it's broken down.
Yep.
And so, if I could get the same thing, then that will help me understand the budget a little better.
Okay.
All right, sounds good, I think that was, oh, one last question. Um, on the, one of the slides you gave, it said that we were spending seven million dollars in textbooks?
Yes.
And so, I know that typically, uh, entire adoption costs maybe five million dollars, six million dollars.
About three.
Sometimes three, depending on what subject, so are we purchasing a new adoption?
Yeah, yes, there would be, and this is, once again, those are adoptions over the next two years.
Okay.
Um, that they're not necessarily ones that we're going to be buying this year, but over the next two years.
So, someone will bring those adoptions to the board later for us to approve specifically?
You're not, yeah, this budget is not approving those specific adoptions.
Okay, perfect, sounds good, I just thought I'm, I thought I might have missed it, but.
Yeah, no.
Sounds good?
They will be ones that are coming in the next couple of years.
Okay, that concludes all my questions, thank you so much for your time.
That was a motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Chambers for item one point zero three, this is the tentative, um, adoption, not the final, so we'll do a hand vote for our tentative, um, adoption. Are there any additional questions? None, all right, all in favor, hand vote. All right, that passes.
I'd like to move approval for the adoption of a tentative mileage rate FY twenty-three of three two dot two three one.
Motion to adopt the tentative FY twenty-three mileage rate, which is unchanged, by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Hearing none, all in favor? That's right, Ms. Tillery is on Zoom, all right, that passes. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Buckner, to adjourn, all in favor, raise your hand. But don't leave. All right, the call board meeting is, has adjourned, and we will now go into our work session for action items for next week's regularly scheduled, next two, two weeks from now, scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting. We're coming. We're getting ready to go into our work session. I was talking about, we're gonna do our work session now for the action items that will come at our regularly scheduled board meeting in two weeks. All right, thank you all for staying, we are now in our work session. Up first is our public agenda, we don't have any requests, but I would like to take this opportunity to read our monthly disclaimer that all official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public, however, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such problems, which would be to request to appear on the public agenda by telephone or email to the superintendent's office. Ms. Williams.
Budworth, do you have some of your staff in, in the room?
Finance department staff, raise your hand.
I just, I just wanna say thank you to you and your staff, because this is, I mean, it, they make it look easy. This is not easy, these budgets, they're huge, they're Herculean, and I just, I wanted to acknowledge both you and your staff for the amount of time that's put into this, I know it's, I know, hopefully we'll get to, we'll get to see them again in two weeks, but I just didn't want it to go by without saying thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is our education committee.
Mrs. Green, I see that there are, let me just address one thing first, I like Kathy's word of Herculean about the budget. I tell you, it, when you start trying to figure it out, I don't know about anybody else, but I kinda get a headache when I try to sit down and figure it out. So congratulations to y'all, we know you did an excellent job and all that. Now, I did want to address one thing about the budget, about the education committee. I see that there are no items. It says no items.
We're on summer break, the students are on summer break.
So what does it has to do with no items? So what does it has to do with no items? I lost my, what's it, what's the title? No items submitted.
Yeah, it says no items submitted, right.
Yeah, in my opinion, when you get down to the educational budget, this is an education, we are dealing with education right here. To me, there never should be a time when you have no items to discuss in education. Now, Janice just did a whole bunch of education stuff, her, everything she did in ESSA, everything that she just did was about education, and I know, I know we called it finance. And that was good, but you just gave us a very good education items that could have been. Also, and if we go now to the finance committee, there are other things. It shows how the finance supports education as, as the, there are many items in A and B, and the items that we will buy that are education-related. However, I still think when we have on that item, there should never be a time that it says no items for education, and that's my personal opinion. Thank you, ma'am.
Did I hear noted? All right, Ms. Tillery, can we, can we hear you, Ms. Tillery? For the policy committee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to present five point oh one. As dictated by the policy B D C, policy adoption, the board will review policy D J E E, the purchasing with possible revision recommendation, or recommended. And prudent administration of the school system demands continual renewal and updating of board policies in accordance with existing needs of the school district. And Ms. McCray is asking for a review of the board policy D J E E, purchasing with possible revisions.
I did get, I got, so this came from me and Mr. Cantrell, I know where it came from, and I'm not gonna belabor it, we got a very good synopsis of why we really can't give any local weight to our bidding process. It was well-reasoned, it was laid out in legal terms with lots of precedent. And so I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, I don't need to go much further into any discussion.
I think that the gist of it is, we could do it if we moved to a point-based system, but I don't think that's currently how we do a lot of these bids, and so it would... And I'm still digging a little bit, but I think it would come kind of more prohibitive than we thought, yes, to make a change. There, I think there's a way to do it, I think there's just, it would make things less efficient.
Okay, so...
But everybody received an email that was Mr. Ellington's, as Kathy said, legal summation of the issues and kind of, he gave us an example of a county that has done it. But again, that was kind of where they were, it was point-based, and you could give some points for local presence. Yes, but that would be much more of an overhaul, but I would, you know, encourage everybody to read the email that I forwarded in regards to that.
And it's also attached, so this is a discussion item. So we're not going any further.
I think we're done.
We're done with the discussion, we won't see this. All right.
Good intentions, but...
Ms. Buckner?
Yeah, okay, I'm glad you said discussion, because I was dealing with the format. When we do a background and rationale, it usually comes from the superintendent. And I see Mrs. Mary has said the school district, and that's because it's an information item.
Okay.
Usually, it's the superintendent who provides the background, who provides, so I'm just saying, being consistent with who, what the superintendent does, I mean, he's the one that does the rationale and make the recommendations.
Right, and, and just, I, I hear what you're saying, but you know, board members, we, we will request, yeah, whatever we want. Whatever we want. Brings the recommendation, correct, Ms. Chambers?
I just wanna, since we're having this discussion, I know that the superintendent does bring a recommendation, but just in my opinion, since this is a discussion item, it is the board that makes policy. So I think it's okay for a board member to bring forth a policy change, because I think that's part of our things we, we're responsible for. If it were something else, I would definitely say the recommendation needs to come from the superintendent. But because it's a policy change, just like board members sat down with Harbison and Hartley, H and H, and we rewrote all of those policies a few years ago. We didn't, those, none of those were recommendations from the superintendent, we sort of just worked with the lawyers to...
But, but I'm glad you're bringing that as an example, just so that we can be clear, we don't do it on our own. That will come from legal advice and input, and becomes a recommendation from the superintendent, and so, just, we're all saying the same thing kind of differently, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that's a perfect example where we worked with the Harvard and Hartley firm as we did policy revisions and review.
One time was Kathy, me, and Ms. McCray, however, when we sorted all out, legal does it, and when it comes back to us, it comes on the, in the agenda as some recommendation of the superintendent, that's, that's the only...
And you will see...
After it's all sorted out, it comes out the superintendent's recommendation, it comes as a recommendation from the superintendent after we sort it out, and let me be clear on something else.
I think also, I think also you have to...
The board also provides parameters for the superintendent.
We all work on the superintendent's recommendations.
We provide parameters for the superintendent.
We all work on the...
We all work together.
Superintendent's recommendations, but, but we are also here to do our own jobs, which is to ask questions, to suggest that the superintendent or his team look at different things. We bring our own lens to the cumulative lens of the board. And so, this came from, have we thought about, could we possibly do this? The answers come back, and we've had discussion, it will probably, you know, it shouldn't go any further. But our role is to help the superintendent look at things, he can't, I mean, he's, he's not omnipotent. He can't be everywhere and everything, and, well, maybe he can, I don't know, but, you know, we have a role.
We provide, we certainly do, and that's when we go to, we have training on our roles and roles of superintendent. Every year, we provide parameters for the superintendent, and we have a lot of things that he does come from recommendations or our discussions that we have. We call him and say, can we do this?
And that's how this happened.
Yeah, we have discussions, and then he goes back and format it and bring it to us for action. And the only thing that I'm saying is, every, when we have our discussions, when we sort everything out, if it's an action item, it should come back according to what we do on the board as a recommendation from the superintendent. But this is not an action item, we, somebody has said, this is an information item, so that point is mute.
That was, she just said what I was gonna say, it's not an action item, it is an informational item, moving on.
Ms. Tillery?
Okay, I'm ready to present five point oh two, the board schedule revision. The recommended action is to discuss with possible action or revised date for the July work session. Due to scheduling, Dr. Lewis recommends that the board discuss and take possible action to revise the schedule for the board work session July, in July. Currently, the July work session is scheduled for Monday, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
And this is due to some scheduling conflicts with travel for myself and a couple other board members. There are two options I'd like to present, one would be to move the work session from Monday, the eleventh to the twelfth, if we wanna have a work session and a subsequent meeting, or to combine the two of them into a work session and joint meeting on the following Monday, which would be the eighteenth, similar to what we do in December typically.
With your pleasure, board.
I like the joint, cuz I'll be out of town.
I'm one of those with a schedule conflict, the twelfth wouldn't help me, but I mean, I'll be back for the voting meeting, which is what I care the most about, but I rarely ever meet, miss meetings, so I would, my preference would be consolidating.
Ms. Chambers?
My preference is not to consolidate, because we don't have enough, we don't have an opportunity to ask questions. If we have to look at it, learn about it, and vote on the same day, I think we have a lack of a chance to have due diligence, and so I think...
My, my preference also is not to consolidate, we have, just like everybody else who has, who is scheduled to do a job, we have two meetings, two scheduled meetings that we have a work session, and then we have a meeting, a board meeting. So it is my preference to follow through on what is supposed to be required for the school board, that means no consolidation here.
All right, so July should be, our heavy month is June, so July should be light, but what is the, I'm trying to get a consensus. Dr. Slade, do you, do you have a preference for? That's the work session on the twelfth.
Yeah, I will not be there on the twelfth.
We don't need, we don't need a quorum on the twelfth. On a quorum? For the work session? Okay, so, that, well, then, who will be here on the twelfth?
I will not, Tillery will not.
I don't have a preference. It must be me and Slade, cuz neither one of us have a preference, I, I've already prepared to be in town and present for the board meetings that we scheduled and voted on at the beginning of the year, so I was already prepared to be here, because when we vote on a calendar, I adjust my personal calendar to accommodate that. So something different has happened, and that happens. And so now, we, we gotta decide, and I don't wanna be the deciding factor, cuz I... Mr. Cantrell will be out, so... What about the twelfth? The twelfth. July is probably light, but still, we just need to kind of decide today.
What's the definition of light?
We haven't decided yet, Dr. Slade, we're still batting it around. I, I, what, my point was, June is our heavy meeting, dealing with this budget, this is a primary function of our board, all right? Dealing with the budget, and that happens in June, there will be some personnel appointments in June, so July, unless the superintendent, unless something happens, maybe personnel, but otherwise, it will be our standard...
You know, I'm just saying, given that, I could say August would be light, cuz I'm trying to figure out that definition.
Did you say you weren't in?
August, September, you know? December, January?
That you can be in person, all right, so right now, three, maybe, maybe Cantrell can't be here. I can be here.
We do, we do a schedule.
But that, to me...
We vote on a schedule. I know, but you was just saying, a lot of people out of town, that shouldn't be part of this discussion, because we have a schedule now, if something happens, you know, but, but just to say, a lot of people be out of town when you vote on a schedule.
So it looks like we will probably have a quorum on the twelfth. Okay.
The, I mean, we've been told that we didn't, I, I, I'm just, I'm surprised we have to have a quorum for a work session.
I ain't arguing with Karen Jones.
Don't argue with Mr. Jones.
Yeah, don't argue.
But, but now, I never knew, I never, I always thought, I always knew we had to have a five people for a quorum on... Yeah, because even if we, if I go, if we go to McDonald's, if five of us go to McDonald's, that's considered a board meeting, and we can just be eating hamburgers. If five board members are in McDonald's or go to, that's called a board meeting. That's called a quorum, so...
So right now, not hearing from Mr. Cantrell and Ms. Jackson, we'll try to verify by...
Ms. Jones said Mark can't do the eleventh or twelfth.
He hadn't responded, so we'll find out from those two, if they can be here on the twelfth, then that's what we'll vote on Monday, okay? And then we'll just have three people, right now, we know three people won't be here. On the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, we're confusing, because we're going back and forth, the twelfth of July is what we're talking about. The twelfth of July is what we're talking about. Adjusting the meeting from the eleventh of July to the twelfth of July. Are you, would you, do you know if you'll be in, um- We're trying to change it to the twelfth. Yes. Can you be here on the, can you be here on the twelfth? Okay. So, we'll verify with Mr. Cantrell and Ms. Jackson, okay? All right, we're moving on.
Okay.
We'll let you know after we thought.
Ms. Hillary.
Oh, sorry, I, I thought that Kathy was still speaking. Um, I'm gonna present five point oh three. Um, the recommended action is to approve and adopt the FY twenty-three training plan for the local board of education as established by the state board of education. By statute, the state board of education is required to adopt a training program for members of local board of education and may periodically adopt revisions to such training program as it deems necessary. This agenda item is to meet the requirement of that, of the law, that the Muskogee County Board of Education will adopt the training program as established by the state board of education. Um, do you want me to go over the, the plan or?
No.
Okay.
Like, this is just focusing on the rest of this year? You can add to it, we just need to make sure we have kind of the minimum.
Correct.
Okay. I just know this isn't, this is not typically what we do, there is usually more of it. And so, I was trying to see why that wasn't captured. Okay.
All right. Ms. Hillary?
Yep, I think I'm done.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Slade, discipline committee?
All right, noth- no items submitted for discipline committee. And Ms. Jackson is not here. So, uh, next week, the superintendent is, um, recommending the appointment of, uh, Ms. Trevica Hunter to serve as assistant principal at East Columbus Magnet Academy. That's seven point zero one. Are there any questions? Seven point zero two, uh, superintendent will be recommending Ms. Jamie Chavez as the principal. Is it Gention? You got too many schools on here, okay, Gention Elementary School. Seven, are there any questions? Seven point zero three, Dr. Lewis is recommending Ms. Candace Lockhart to serve as principal of Lonnie Jackson Academy. Any questions? Seven point zero four, uh, superintendent is recommending the approval of Jennifer Ag- Ag- Agiri to serve as director of St. Alma Gifted Program. Are there any questions? And then, monthly, you, the personnel report will be attached for your review. And that is the end of the personnel committee. Next, property committee, Ms. Chambers.
Okay, eight point zero one is the library report. Now through July the thirty-first, the summer reading challenge is here. Oceans of possibilities. Children's, teens, adults, and even school board members can participate and win prizes. Children who've read, uh, or read ten books, or adults or teens who read for four hours can get a completion. Thanks to the generous support from Aflac, we have a lot of prizes. Programs all summer and the next golden ticket Tuesday will be July the fifth. There will be random winners and they will receive a fifty-dollar gift card. But you need a library card to participate. Make sure you go to your local library and get your library card. There are several other library stories that are attached, but you guys can read those at your leisure. Any questions about the library reports?
Even school board members can participate. Okay, I did the winner one and I must admit, I hadn't registered for this one, so I'll get on it.
So, I thought that was an, an important piece of information, so that's why I read that, okay? Moving right along, eight point zero two is the museum report. And, um, you should have received, board members should have received something in the mail about this as well. But in June, we are looking forward to the return of summer camps, when we will offer four camps celebrating the exhibition of Alma W. Thomas. And the name of that exhibition is called Everything is Beautiful. And this will be for students of all ages. So, um, it's opening, um, July the first also. So, um, keep that in mind, there is a calendar attached as well of all the wonderful things that are going on at the museum. Are there any questions about eight point zero two, the museum report? Hearing none, I'll move on to eight point zero three. This is a lease agreement for South Columbus Library. And the superintendent is recommending that we approve a lease. And there is a budgetary impact of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars annually. And it is, the lease is attached. Any questions about this lease? Okay, hearing none, I'll move to eight point zero four. These are the same leases that we approve every year, um, and they are attached. Drama Kids, uh, Coppy Town, South Columbus United Methodist, um, and several others. Any questions about these renewals? Hearing none, that concludes the property committee, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Next is the construction committee. Uh, nine point zero one is the new budget for the Shaw High School Cooler and Freezer. Are there any questions on this item? We already approved, um, the architectural firm to work on the interior cooler and freezer project at Shaw High School, so we're being asked to approve the projected budget of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of the cooler and the freezer. All right, hearing no questions, we're moving on. To- Mm-mm, nine point zero two, I was kidding, I skipped nine point zero one. That was nine point zero two. Nine point zero one is the new budget for Shaw. That's the new budget, okay? Nine point zero two, gosh. Is where the architect approved it. Nine point zero one is the actual new budget. And every time I touch it, it goes on to the next one, so I'm afraid to touch it again. She keeps going. Which one, is it the, the new budget approving the contractor?
The first one is just approving the budget and the second one is approving the contractor. Yes. Um, we have decided we want to keep these items separate. At one point, we used to kind of combine them, but it just makes it cleaner for us that if we have, here's the budget in one item and then here's the, um, the contractor in the other one, so.
Is there a hundred and eight thousand dollars or a hundred and forty-five? I'm a little confused.
Why do we need a contractor?
The project budget's one forty-five, the one oh eight's the actual contract.
Mr. Anderson.
That is correct, the total project is one forty-five. What we're asking to award for the contractor is one oh eight.
Just curious, since this is kind of a finance committee thing too, why did, why, if we're presenting the budget and the contractor simultaneously, why don't they match?
So, there's more to the total project than what the contractor will be paid.
Thank you, that's, does that, does that answer your question, Ken?
Answers that question, but then it opens the door for another question. What's going to happen with the difference between the one forty-five and the one oh eight? What, what is that paying for, what part of the project?
So, the total project would include things like the architect fees, which were, when you approved the architect, they're paid out of that, as well as contingency for the owner. So, what you're being asked for is the overall budget, which is what the architect helped us prepare. And so, the project for the, the amount for the contractor is just for the contract, construction work. The rest of it would be contingency as well as the other residual fees.
Okay.
So, wait, that means, so, am I hearing it right, that the total cost for this project is two hundred and fifty? No. So, the total is the one forty-five.
The total is the one forty-five.
Yeah, I do think in the future, we might want to list that differently, 'cause to me, I thought it meant like it was two separate amounts. I didn't realize the one oh eight was part of the one forty-five.
If you look at nine point two, it reads, the very last sentence reads that the one oh eight will come from the construction amount for the total budget of one forty-five.
Have you already submitted the budget for one forty-five?
That's, that's not-
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back to, if you're gonna submit them simultaneously, it would be helpful if we knew what the budget was for. And in that line item, it should show contractor, one oh eight, nine ninety-two, contingency, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine, architect fees, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and four- 'cause, I mean, we don't, it's just, you're not giving us the whole picture. You're just saying, we're asking you to budget a hundred and forty-five and out of that, we want to spend a hundred and eight.
We can make that adjustment.
It would be helpful just to attach it, just an itemization. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
It's my, it's my role in life is to-
So, you want to sum it up, Mr. Anderson? What you're going to make the adjustments and bring back to us so that?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got it.
Go ahead.
Sure, so, we'll, we'll change moving forward. This is how the budget's been presented for some time now. We present that, the overall project budget and get approval for that. So, that's what nine point one is asking for, the overall project budget of one forty-five. And then nine point two is asking for a por- a portion of that project budget to be spent on construction of one oh eight. So, the two things we presented today is the overall project budget of one forty-five. Assuming that is approved, we want you to approve the construction portion of the budget of one oh eight, which is nine point two.
I'm gonna push back a little bit on this is how it's always done. We, we generally get a budget that has some itemization to it. We see what the architect fees are, we see what the contingency is. We see sometimes even more than that if it's a big, big project, but. Am I wrong about that?
Be presented separately. The architect and contractors are presented separately.
They're presented separately.
But because they're coming right here, one behind the other, it, it would help to itemize it so that it doesn't seem like a hundred and forty-five for this one and then a hundred and eight for the second one. Even though, once you read all of that, you kind of figure out, oh, they're talking about the same thing, but just so it'll be, um, more palatable, I guess.
Just make it easy for us.
I guess where I'm confused is there's nothing in nine point zero one. There's no itemization, there's no number, there's no attachments. It just says, we want this bud- a budget. And then in nine point two, it says, oh, and by the way, the budget we're, you're gonna approve at nine point one is going to be one forty-five. But that's after we've already passed the line item for the budget.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, we can just, in the future, we're just itemize it out and break it out.
Or at least, if not, put something in-
But it's not, we've done this, we have done it before.
There's not, all it says is approve the project budget for the replacement of the cooler. That's all it says, there's nothing attached, there's no amount. At nine point zero one, there's, there's, I don't know what you're asking us to do in nine point zero one.
Okay. It'll, it'll, it'll be updated next week. I mean, not next week, in two weeks. Okay, all right. Nine point zero three is our, uh, monthly construction status reports. So, when you have a moment, go ahead and update yourself on the status of all construction projects. And then that brings us to our finance committee, Ms. Williams.
Several of these first items you heard in the presentation of the budget, so it will be reviewed. Ten point zero one is the Chattahoochee Valley, um, library budget. This is the one point five mils, where did it go? Here we are, just disappeared on me. Ten points, are there any questions on that? Ten point zero two is the capital projects budget. Again, reviewed in the overall budget questions. Uh, ten point oh three is the initial activity budget, activity funds budget. And ten point oh four is the twenty-twenty-three debt service fund budget. Again, these were mostly in the presentation. Ten point zero five is your school nutrition budget. That moves us to, um, ten point zero sis- six. This is purchase exception A and B, this is your textbooks, your testing material. You have twenty items before you, of course. This is the, this, this is the month when everybody's buying for next year. Are there any questions on any of those line items? Seeing none, that moves us to purchase exception C for maintenance. You have seven items before you. This is for our voice over internet protocol, our Motorola mobile communications, global position, GPS, et cetera. Are there any question, most of it appears to be IT. Ten point zero eight is purchase exception D, this is your, uh, your renewals or continuance of existing purchase agreements. You have thirteen items, which is a, uh, variety from paper goods to our concession stand commissions, to bus air conditioning, and some temporary staffing. Any questions? Ten point zero nine is purchase exception F, the invitation to bid. Uh, you have five items before you, again, voice over internet, integrated business, cellular, uh, custodial, and uniforms. Any questions on any of those items? It was just a ten point ten, your professional services. You have five items before you to include GSBA risk management, urgent care, uh, our auditing from our accountants, as well as professional learning services. Are there any questions on those? Ten point one one is new budgets. These are your items that we see every month moving, uh, federal funding around. There's three items, one for summer transition pre-lottery, pre-K lottery, and then two S R fund items, any questions on those? Ten point one two, you have three items before you on a, under competitively bid, uh, process. There's linen, ice cream, and beverages. Any questions on those three items? Ten point one three is your monthly adjustments between your different divisions. Are there any questions on those? Ten point one four, uh, we don't usually have this many, but it's that time of year. So, our sole source and volatile products such as, uh, printing, advertising, fuel, um, fuel, uh, GSBA membership, I don't know why that's there. Why is that a sole source of, oh, GSBA, got it, yep, got it. And then parts and services for buses, any items, any questions? Ten point one five, you have four items for, um, the, uh, purchase order increases. Excuse me. One for G- One for G nets, one for libraries, one for cell service. And then the, the largest one is for professional, uh, staffing services. Any questions? Ten point one six is your, um, state grants. You have twelve state grants that we seeking approval. Mo, a lot of them are CTA E based, math and science, residential care, preschool, uh, handicap state grant and hygiene grant. Uh, any questions on, on any of those? Takes us to ten point one seven. We have a whole lot of federal grants that we'll be seeking approval for. There's twenty-five that cover your various federal programs. Ten point one eight, uh, I can't agree more with this suggest, this recommendation from the superintendent that because of, um, the volatility of the market, uh, due to supply and demand in the chain, uh, that we declare paper inventory to be a, um, to be a, uh, volatile item that we can vote on every month under that one item, instead of doing it for the, the, the normal process, because they, vendors will not guarantee these prices over thirty days. It's just, they can't and we can't. So, I think that's a really good move and a good recommendation. Are there any questions on that? Uh, donations, my favorite, ten point one nine. Uh, we have, so we have twenty-nine pages, twenty-nine slides on our PowerPoint of varying donations from individuals, from anonymous sources, from PTOs, from, uh, companies, from faith-based organizations, adding up to, uh, fifteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, touching eighteen elementary schools, three middle schools, five high schools, and of course, our, our arts academy. So, I think that adds up to like twenty-seven schools that these donations touch, showing once again, the generosity of this community and the commitment to public education in Muskogee County. Ten point two zero is your monthly financial statements. Are there any other questions? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right. Rounding off our agenda for this work session are some information items listed below. Um, eleven point zero one, the superintendent is gonna discuss some transportation matters.
Yes, actually, um, Mr. Anderson, well, just, uh, bottom line is, we're making progress, but we're not there yet. Long story short, Mr. Anderson, you want to elaborate a little bit? Please.
Thank you. We are excited about some of the progress we're making with hiring for bus drivers. We had a very successful job fair last week. We will continue to have more job fairs and to promote our needs with bus drivers and bus monitors to ensure that we are ready for the start of the school year. However, based upon our attrition rate with our retirees and overall loss throughout the year, we are estimating that we will start the new school year fifty-one drivers short. Fifty-one regular ed drivers short. We are estimating that we will start the new school year with five special ed drivers short and sixteen special ed bus monitors short. That equates to an approximate thirty-two percent late arrival to school for our students throughout the district. Based upon school start times and the number of routes that we'll have bus drivers doing. So, they will be doubling routes in order to get students there to school. So, thirty-two percent of our students will be arriving after the start of the bell, if they are bus riders, based upon those staffing numbers. However, we're still working to identify ways to improve that. We are looking at different carpooling options to encourage our, um, parents to carpool with each other, different apps that will help us with that. We are looking at different ways to improve efficiency of our routes, as well as to provide different services for our special needs students in order to transition those drivers from special needs drivers to regular ed drivers. We are still continuing to work those processes, but as of now, that's where we stand.
I just want to point out that we're continuing the, uh, the referral bonuses for our employees to encourage any, that applies for any open vacancies we have in any department, would be culinary, bus drivers, whatever. One of the areas we're looking at going forward to incorporate, you know, we talked about it on retreat, looking at rezoning for next year as we start to work toward that. Other things we're looking at are school start times, because they, there are educational benefits to adjusting start times. But we'll be talking more about that, but there is, these are all things that can help us improve efficiencies. But the best thing, if you know people who are looking for part-time employment, uh, and, uh, we certainly need drivers, we need culinary techs, we need, like districts all throughout the country. Everyone's looking for the same unicorns. So, uh, just gotta continue to try and encourage everyone to, uh, recruit, uh, so we can move forward on that. Did, uh, are there questions about that?
There are, there are a couple of questions, but, um, Ms. Williams, but I will, I will say that, um, thank you for putting that on our minds, so that when we have to make a decision later, we will have already, you've already started working on this and it won't seem like we're reacting.
Right.
Um, that you were actually putting plans in place, trying to be prepared for what we, what we've been talking about for the last, uh, couple of years, several months, um, about the hiring challenges. But I do want to say, and I know everybody here has probably seen it out on the social media. I do like the incentives that employees were given to be recruiters and how they are on their social media, you know, asking to, to say, I referred you and, and putting their information on there. I think that was a great, um, tool to equip all of our employees with, so they can have the link to Muskogee County School District and who referred them. So, that was really good and hopefully that will make a difference, since you had a successful, um, job fair for drivers. Maybe if we ramp those efforts up to remind employees that this is, this is a tool that's available and to keep working at it.
But I do want to point out too, it does take us time to train drivers. So, we have to make sure we give ourselves enough back time to be able to get them trained. If they show up two weeks before school starts, that is not gonna qualify them to be able to drive there, driving the bus. So, if you have an interest in driving buses, let us know now. Don't wait till two weeks before school starts, say, you know, I think I'd like to do that. Or I would like to have that additional income or whatever. And, and from, that's true for any job we have, uh, but, but particularly with bus drivers. Uh, because, you know, people are out trying to recruit these folks and we're trying to get them in. But we got to have everyone shoulder the wheel on this one, because this is a big, like I say, it's a, it's a national, uh, issue. Uh, so we're continuing to work on that, but it's something, we need your help. Yes, we're making progress, but we are not there.
And that's for all positions, aren't it, Ms. Williams?
So, we're projecting at this time that we may start school at a fifty-five person deficit in drivers.
Regular ed drivers, fifty-one, special ed drivers, five.
Fifty-six. What, what did we finish the year at?
Thirty-nine drivers for regular ed and special ed drivers, twelve down.
So, we, we've, I'm, I'm sorry, thirty-nine and twelve?
Thirty-nine and twelve short. So, we've had some, we've had some retire, we have lots of retirees and then we have resignations as well.
So, we're steady, we're, we're lost a couple more over the summer. Okay, thank you.
But I, but I will say that through the whole school year, we had a lot of late arrivals. So, you are definitely going to have to, some, something's gotta be done. Even, we, we finished, but it was a challenge all year with, with those kids getting to school late every single day and picked up late according to parents.
That's why we have to look at things like start times, carpooling, people working things out together. Uh, this is, like I say, it's, it's, it's not insoluble, but it is definitely a challenge, for sure.
Ms. McRae?
This might be a scary question to ask, but is there an age minimum for a bus driver?
Twenty-one to be a bus driver.
Well, I was just saying, like, upper level college students, because I was at the University of Georgia recently and the guy that was driving very well a bus and down, you know, through Athens traffic, which is a nightmare, looked to me to only be about twenty-one. Didn't know that might be, you know, potential graduate school kind of upper age CSU. That might be a place to put up some, some flyers or something. And he did a really good job.
That is a new initiative that we're working on. We've created part-time bus driver positions, targeting students as well as seniors. So, if you are interested in only driving in the morning or only driving in the afternoon, so we are creating those opportunities and partnering with CSU.
And if somebody's interested in something more full-time, we can do driver in the morning, driver in the afternoon and work in the culinary, work in culinary midday, so we can cobble together lots of different things. So, we can be very creative, but we got to have enough interest. So, that's just something, whatever, if you have any interest in working in those jobs, contact us and we will figure out a way to make it, as long as you can pass the background check and all the things we've got to have to put.
Yes, I just have a comment about, um, something you said about the late arrivals. Definitely, I want to ditto what, um, Ms. Green has said, that we thank you for letting us know ahead of time before our phone starts ringing about, oh, my child was two hours late today. But I do want, just for your consideration, Dr. Lewis, when a child arrives to school late, they sort of never catch up that day, educationally. And I'm sure you know that, I don't have to tell you that, but I'm giving you my two, I'm giving you my two cents when you are considering bringing a recommendation about late arrival time. I think definitely it's an educational decision, because if you arrive late, people have already started, their day sort of trickles down from there. So, I would definitely be in favor of looking at something like start times, so that we can, you know, get them there safely, but also get them there on time, so.
And long days for students, long days.
And of course, everything, we live in an ecosystem, so everything touches something else, after-school programs and everything else like that, and parents' ability to afford after-school program. So, it's just all those things we're trying to take into consideration, be cognizant of. Yes, our mission is first and foremost, the education of our children. But we recognize there's a lot of support mechanisms out there, like after-school programming, before-school, all those things. We're trying to work through those and we, we've heard your concerns and those of parents. And we're trying to use these and make sure we implement things very judiciously with the right warning and something. But sometimes, emergency measures require us to take emergency action and that's what we're looking at. We're just trying to provide everybody with upfront information now, just putting everybody on notice that we need everyone's help.
And, and we hope that you can determine if start times are going to be impacted or considered as early as possible, so that parents can plan. All right, next item is.
Uh, the rest of these are for your information, but one of these things is the district pipeline that you all ask for periodically, and this is all of our ma, major projects, so you can look at those at your leisure. Uh, one thing I do want to just take a moment, if I can, while I'm, uh, as far as my, my report. Want to just acknowledge and thank Ms. Green. Uh, she officially ended on Saturday her work as, on the, uh, on the Georgia School Board Association, uh, board directors and serving as a past president and prior to that, a year as president. So, again, I want to thank you for your service and commitment on behalf of students of all of Georgia. So, thank you for that. And while at GSBA, there was only one student group that performed and it was the Rainy McCullough School of the Arts. Their chorus sang and did a tremendous job and received something I'd never seen before. And that was two standing ovations, uh, at the, at the performance. Uh, and they were very well received by, uh, school board members and I received. I'm sure those of you attended also heard many accolades for our Rainy McCullough School of the Arts chorus under the direction of Matt White, did a tremendous job, I'm very proud of them as well. And it's my report.
And we're trying to get that video available for the public as well, to get it off of the conference app onto a different platform, so that, you know, we can share that wonderful performance.
I want to follow up with what Dr. Lewis said about the, uh, Rainy McCullough, um, uh, singing presentation. They did so well that the current president, um, she, uh, reviewed what, what good was happening in all of the hundred and eighty districts. And so, uh, I was listening, I was on edge, listening to see if she would call Muskogee County. And she did, uh, she, uh, called, she went from the Rainy McCullough, call it, school and she talked about how we were providing services for, uh, uh, all, uh, types of children. And, uh, and then she addressed their, their performance at that time, so they made us look good.
Yeah, we were, our chests were poked out proud. Anything else? District pipeline report? Did you do that? Okay, and then the audit committee summary? Do you want to?
That's just information, if anyone else that doesn't attend or part of the committee would like to know what we discuss. And if you have any questions, you can ask one of your audit committee meetings or Mr. Slaughter out there. He would be the best one to ask. Yeah, we do actually probably go in a bit more detail than that, but, um, we'll spare you all and give you the summary. Oh, that is, okay. For your reading enjoyment. If you would like more information, let me know.
All right, I think every, um, hearts and minds are clear. We will adjourn this work session. Have a good evening, we'll see you in two weeks.